Good evening and welcome to the regular town board meeting for the panel question for August thirteenth, twenty twenty four. All the reading and per and bring me the pledge. To start off this evening, Peter DeAngels, the Sons of the American Legion detachment of New York. I would like to make the presentation and we invite him.
Thank you, Ben. A man of many hats. Most of you know me as a town animal control officer, but uh. I'm a twenty-six-year member, the Sons of the American Legion detachment of New York. Uh, I come out of a squadron in Brooklyn, New York, uh, post sixteen thirty-six. I uh. Twenty-six years I was post squadron commander, county commander, district commander. Uh, I sat on the vice vice commander committee for the state and back in July of twenty-three, I was elected commander. Of the state for the Sons of the American Legion. So I just finished, I traveled all sixty-two counties, visited over one hundred and twenty American Legion posts, having breakfasts, luncheons, dinners. Uh, I get to select projects that I want them to donate money to. So one of my projects was a temporary financial assistance where if there's a flood and American Legion member needs money. He can fill out the application, get as much as five thousand dollars. Uh, the other one was the B two-one program, which helps on veteran suicide. Uh, you could Google all of this and it's amazing reads. And my, my personal project, I selected the Tustin Youth Commission. But it's very close to my heart, being a foster parent, a licensed foster parent for the county. And I'm also on the Children and Youth Committee and soon to be appointed to the National Children and Youth Committee while we go to New Orleans next week for our national convention. So as I was traveling, everybody was giving me money for all three projects. And it went really well and you know. What these girls do with this commission is close to my heart and. All the things they do, like I did, I just read that you took sixty kids to the Wayne County Fair and. Like blew me away, like everything you take your time, the volunteer position, as is mine, I don't get paid to do this. But I go around advocating for veterans, childrens and uh. And a lot of other programs, uh, with four pillars in the American Legion are Americanism, children in youth. Homeland Security and Veterans Rehabilitation and Affairs. So those four, those four programs are very important to our nation to stay. So without further ado, if the representatives from the Tustin Youth Commission could come up here. From the bottom of my heart, it is my pleasure and honor to present you guys with this check for fifteen thousand and sixty-nine dollars.
Twenty miles into it, Peter?
Uh, I put about twenty thousand miles on the trip, yeah, yeah, it's an amazing state, wow.
Uh, the paid bills generally extended seventy-four thousand, sixty-nine dollars and nine cents. Highway sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and seven cents. Water twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and twenty-six cents, sewer twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-two cents. The lighting district, four thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and twelve cents for a total of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and ten cents. Um, the larger general was the CAC grant, I believe, for the um engineering that we've got, so that's reimbursable for the pound. Uh, I believe past and Greg did the bill and if you have comments?
No, no, okay.
Uh, motion to accept the bills is presented. I was made that motion to present, uh, pay the bills is presented, uh, second?
Oh, second.
Further discussion, all in favor? I oppose. Our division reports, again, those that are not read here in the meeting are available online. Uh, and let's see where we are. Don't believe anything here, you know. Uh, CAC, Jane?
Oh, we're all way there, good, wow, the CAC was a good, we had a good report because we had a fabulous meeting. On August first, uh, the CAC members, uh, worked with MJ Engineering. And um approximately twenty-six members from the public attended the meeting and MJ Engineering um. Chief Planner Sarah um Chris did a small presentation, a short presentation. And then we had, or they had maps, whole different maps around the room that the public could look at. And those maps represented the, a map of just the open space, a map of the, the, the water, the, the map of the floods, different maps. And then lastly, the public had uh an opportunity for input of what they would like to see for recreation, what they would like to see. Retaining open space, et cetera, et cetera. Most importantly though, is the public's input is necessary to make this open space plan. Something that will be meaningful to the public, to the board and to the future. So the, um, a survey will be mailed to you, but if you would like, I, Crystal, you couldn't. There are these cards, business cards on the table on your way out. You may pick one up and on the back is a QR code so that you can go online and take the survey now. It only takes a few minutes, I did it and it's really very simple to do. But it's a very important document because it's a framework for the future of this town. Anything else on that?
That's it.
Unless you want to.
Bye, branch.
Okay, this is it now, you'd have to follow me on this board because I don't think you know, all of you know this. I got a call, well, let's do the simple ones first, the UTC has submitted the final report for phase one of the open space plan. And I submitted a new grant for phase two of the open space plan. The National Fish and Wildlife, we just talked about, the T-Mobile grant. Uh, that we apply for, we should find out within the next couple of weeks. And Sullivan one eighty is looking for closure of um the community development grant. We need to submit an update that ASAP so that you know. Now, follow me on the water infrastructure project. I got a call from Delaware Engineering. We had spoken to them about uh looking for additional funding. And then major funders that are out there are the USDA, which we talked about in a former meeting. And CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. If we do that, which we can, but when you do grants, the basic premise is you can never ask a funder to fund something that's already done. So we could, if we wanted to ask for money for all those, in those two agencies. The way it's is now, we'd have to stop and put in the applications. Well, we can't stop because we're so far behind anyway. So what we talked about doing, which we need board approval for, is to make this project in phases. And the first phase would be the water tank. So that would be phase one and we can carve that out of the, the whole project. Remember, we have approval from WEA, the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act of New York State for three million dollars. But what they're approving is forty percent of the total bill. So if we carved out the water tower, whatever the water tower cost. Forty percent of that money would be paid by the WEA. The rest of the WEA money would go towards the, the rest of the project, depending how we carve it out. But the benefit is we can hopefully get some money from USDA. And with CDBG, you can apply once a year. And we spoke to RCAP, remember, RCAP are the people that are helping us with unfold our um. The nuts and bolts of the, of paperwork that we need, the administrative side. And they, they said, and you might know, you can't, they said that if you do get CDBG grants, it's usually about a million dollars.
Babe, can you speak up a little bit, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you speak up a little bit?
Oh, sure, Iris, I'll do that.
Turn the mic to yourself.
So in order, can you hear that, Ben? In order to get CDBG grants, Community Development Block Grants, you have to qualify. Your town has to qualify and qualification is income level. Our town, and they use census data. The census data for our town is on the cusp, we're, we don't qualify. But the, the groups that do not enter into the figure are second homeowners, commercial properties. I think that's it. And so we.
Renters, rent the renters down with the.
Right, so what we're going to do is do an inventory, an income inventory with RCAP's help. And we will send, they will send, or we will send a survey to you and we would like it back. And then if we don't get enough back, because you have to have a percentage of the population respond. And if you don't, and then if we don't get that percentage, someone will come door to door. The, the survey um is, the results are not known to anybody here, it all goes to RCAP. But we think that we'll be able to then qualify for CDBG grants. And that would be maybe, uh, maybe a million dollars a year, we could, so that's really, really helpful. So the take-home message is there's hope for getting more money. But we need your cooperation with a survey for the CDBG grant. I think that is the grand street.
Thank you. Any questions for Jane from the board?
Kevin, so, uh, water sewer, just to continue on that and to clarify what Jane talked about with the, uh, can you hear me? The uh, it's served act, I just want to make sure, what do you know? That this income survey will only go to members of the water sewer district. So it's, it's not the whole town, it's just people who are in the water sewer district and as Jane said, it'll only go to people who are residents. You know, residents and renters essentially. So if you own, you know, if you're commercial, you won't be surveyed. And uh, if you're, like I say, you know, an art, an Airbnb is, is not, is not residential, so they're not going to be surveyed. So we are confident that the number will come down because it's just residents, it's not people using their homes as businesses. Uh, so we're working on that, the, the letter will probably go out in October. Uh, because Jane is sending up, the CAC is sending a survey out on the open space in September, so we don't want to garage people. Or confuse people with, you know, one survey after another. Uh, so that's that, we're in touch with RCAP, they can't be thanked enough, they do this for nothing, my favorite cause. So Craig and Dave both expressed, and I'm not sure this will come up again. Uh, that some concern about putting trees on Little Lake Erie as part of the beautification because of roots and pipes and such. Uh, generator at the sewer plant, um. You sent, you sent out, Craig, the water department sent out bid specs to four prospects and the lowest came in for Pike County Generator. For forty-one thousand, two eighty-five, the water sewer committee recommends that we accept that, Ben, and. You're saying we, we, due to the amount of money it's uh. With our chairman policy, anything over twenty thousand needs to be bid. So I will sit with you, Craig, and go over some things that you can do to put this out the bid.
Okay.
Um, we'll authorize that under new business and uh, after confirming with the attorney, um. We'll give you the information so you can get that started. And then the other thing is also to uh. Check on the state funds to see if uh. It's on, if any of them on state bid would meet the requirements that you've got.
Okay.
Well, we'll, we'll keep up with it after tonight.
Two ongoing issues that Craig and Dave brought up is the survey for uh putting the, the new shed down on the flats. And also the talking to the neighbors on Kirk Road about an easement for the generator, we need to. Discuss that later, probably. Uh, one of the biggest surprises uh was that the well. One, the pump wasn't, isn't pumping quite as much or something going on there, Craig, jump in if I'm not making this clear, but uh. Was it Threepledge came in and um. Was it, oh, oh, excuse me, they came in and tried to pull the pipe out. And they only got thirty feet of, say, five hundred-ish feet. Uh, so what is it Sullivan County Excavating is going to come on Thursday and give it a more professional tug, you know? And if they loosen it, then um Fulton will go back to trying to see what's wrong. Uh, the doubt, the worst case scenario is that the pipe messed up, or we might have to dig a new well.
Worst case scenario is often building well, can't get the old one out.
Right, that's the worst case, best case is, it's Thursday, so the big reveal. And right, but right now we're living long with the, the, they were worried when they did this that the, that the pump wouldn't turn on again, but it did.
It did, yeah, it was working good, but we did those slowly on its way out.
And just, right. But there is a possibility that you may need to. Dig a new well and Dave said that's like thirty grand-ish.
Yeah.
Just then, you know, this is something to know about, you know.
And I mean, I was not at your committee meeting and this is really where the question should have been uh poised. With this well one issue, how is well number two faring with getting it back online with the DOH? So real quick, it's well three that's having any.
Well, three, I used to call one as a backup, but um.
More than enough with this one, well, two is coming along slow. Um. Which is normal. There, a little bit of rehab, but that's, okay, that's a slow, but that's something we can get online if we need to.
Okay, and just some of, this is just pure scuttlebutt, but some of the people talking while they were trying to deal with this. Well, three was that they felt that earthquake that hit New Jersey a couple of months ago, they felt it there. So who knows what the bedrock was doing five hundred feet below. It was just a, you know, you try to, when you're literally in the dark, trying to figure out what happened. That was one scenario, anyway, that's the report in core.
Thank you, any questions from the board or Kevin? Justin, you?
Well, you already know our big news, so thank you again, Pete. Um, he has been keeping us posted, by the way, throughout the year, he has told us, picked us. So this wasn't a total surprise for us and, but he would text every now and again, we're at two thousand dollars, ladies, we're at five thousand, we never dreamed of fifteen thousand, so thank you. Um, this has been a rare summer, an unbelievably summer, busy summer for Justin U. Um, last month, we took a trip to Carousel Park here in Beach Lake. House came on to see us, which was a nice surprise. We had forty-three Tustin youth children attend and I think um. Maybe six non-Tustin, so very small non, forty-three Tustin kids to go to a summer event is a really big number because vacations usually pull people everywhere. So that was wonderful. And as Pete said, uh, last week was Wayne County Fair. And we just heard on the radio today, I think Crystal said, or Facebook or somewhere, that this was the lowest year of attendance the Wayne County Fair has ever had, is the better. Um, despite that, we had sixty Tustin youth kids go, which was a pretty phenomenal number. So this is just a great example of how our budget, every budget is always fluid because I think we budgeted like four hundred bucks, not no one who would go. And we way exceeded our budget, which is great, we want the kids to come, so that's always changing, it's a give and take. Um, throughout the summer, we've continued Summer Art and Garden Club as well as our Unplugged. We have two sessions left for each program, so this Wednesday, this Saturday, and then next week, and then that gives us a break in the um. Wednesday clubs until school starts back and that will continue again. And in news regarding the Wednesday club, this summer, Tustin Youth, um. Previous to the summer, for the last few years, we've been partnering with the Tustin Social. Uh, Bethel Woods has been hired in programming with us and we've got programming combined with the library. Um, but the Tustin Social and Tustin Youth were kind of the driving forces who collaborated. Put all this together, um, and it's been a few years. And in a lot of meetings, Crystal and I have had with Breta and Jean from Tustin Social. They feel like they've hit a spot where they've kind of helped us, we've helped each other get us set up. And they're going to move on to, there's always another project, right, that needs to be done. So after some collaboration with our board, we had to decide, are we, do we want to, are we able to continue this program solely? And we've decided it is very much needed, the attendance is great, um, and we're going to do it. So we are partnering with the library, um. And we're going to continue club here and Tustin Social is going to keep doing what they do, they're not done being involved with kids' activities. Um, but we'll kick back up in September and we're going to be seeking permission, receiving to go for another grant, um, or to that. It's uh, Tustin Social, so we are going to be focusing on the younger group of kids that come to the after-school program and it kind of alleviates something, um. Of the younger kids, but it just opens up another window for Tustin Social because they have a lot of, um, a lot of good members from their board. And they have a lot to offer to resources, so they're going to be focusing on the teens and teen and doing more um programs directly for them, which is going to be really. I didn't want to repeat the Tustin Social, sorry, she can say that. Um, yeah, so that's the direction, we'll, we'll continue to be doing after-school club down here and. That, that's our bulk, anywhere from seven, and then we've had inquiries of four and five-year-olds to nateen too. So we're going to be tweaking a little bit, probably from that kindergarten age right up to like the twelve-year-old, that's our, our big number. Um, we talked about Fort Delaware last month, they started their Cushy Tump Kids Program. Um, they got enough grants where it was free for all the children who signed up, so they didn't need our help in supplementing paying to Tustin kids. So what I did for them is just we blasted it, we advertised it, I did social media events for them, sent emails out. And they fill up every week, so it's been a very successful program for the local kids. What I talked to John and our board about is, John Conway of Fort Delaware. We did receive a grant from Museum and Cultural Programming for fifteen hundred. There is a large group of children volunteering at the fort and more who want to volunteer and people come to me. Although I, I don't work there, but they know I help get kids there, um, how do I get my kid there? And I also know John welcomes all of that, but in their budget, they can't clothe and outfit all of these children, they just didn't budget for it. So that's something Crystal and I can help with. Um, we can take this money and help make clothing. That the volunteer children can wear and it belongs to the volunteer program through us. And so year after year, as kids come and go and volunteer, maybe they phase out a volunteer and they get hired there. Well, now, now they're the fort's job to clothe up, we can bring in the next set of volunteers, so we're working closely with them. Um, something new we did that we've never done before and was successful. We worked with Susan Mendoza at Chi-Hite Camp. And over a course of two weeks in July, we sent twenty-five Tustin youth kids to day camp for the first time. And after seeing how successful that was, we hope to be able to apply for funds specifically for that and let that program grow next year. Um, some of the kids here actually went and they had a blast. And let's say, um, he came up to get our check, he's one of our littlest active Tustin Youth members and we had fifteen-year-olds go. They loved it, so thank you to Susan because she really worked with us, gave us a very reduced rate for our children to attend. Um. Some sad news, after our high, there's a low, we also experienced a community last week. Um, most of you probably heard about the accident that happened in Lava. Um, the Lana Lion was a youth club member, so not only was she a. She went to school with our kids, um, was friends with our kids, um, she came here and she enjoyed youth club and her mom brought her. We're a small community, so um, we just wanted to recognize that, we lost a member last week and we canceled youth club, we could all send her. I'm going to see if that comes out healthy. Um. Something else we did for the very first time, um, George from the Blue Fox and his wife Meg invited us to come and have a fundraiser event there, a pool party. Um, when did we go, August, July, I don't even know now, late July, last week, it's kind of a blur with everything. Um, it was free to everybody, thank you. Was it, yes, it was my favorite, okay, it was free to everybody, so we put it on social media, we only had a week's notice, we blasted it out, we sent emails out. And um, he was thrilled, he said over two hundred people came and went throughout the day. We weren't really keeping tabs, we put a donation jar out, we're not there to make money, that's not our mission, so. He had given us the opportunity to do a lot more, we just put a jar out, I wanted families to have fun, we raised a little over fifty dollars, which was nice. Um, and the families had a blast, so we're hoping to do the, something with them again. And coming up, we still have Kalahari rooms available, if you don't have to be a Tustin member, this is a great group rate. Your friends, family, please let them all know, um, it's a really good deal that we're getting. In September, we have two trips planned, we're going back to the Carrion Cell for more fall activities on September fifteenth. And the date is still to be determined for Lakeland Orchard, that's always a fun fall event for families. Halloween preparation is underway, it is definitely going to be at Fort Delaware this year, we will have a haunted house. The only complaint we received in the past is a little too scary, so this year we will suggest ages twelve and up. Um, and that way a parent can decide if they want to censor child through. We're doing the trunk retreat, so all of you, there's a lot of you in here who do trunks for us, if you would like to, we'll have some sign up soon, we still need trunks. And if anyone loves Halloween and, and you want to volunteer or be part of the scary fun, let us know, we're definitely looking for help. And Christmas will be, not Christmas, our Christmas event will be December seventh, it's the first Saturday. Um, and we usually collaborate with the chamber, so we're still doing that, but we will be. doing that, but we will be needing to go back again and the Grinch and all of that kinds. And I think that's all I have down. Do you guys have any questions?
What day is the, uh, Fort Delaware?
October nineteenth, Saturday.
Does that mean trunk or treat is?
No, we're doing it all together.
Trunk or treat will be.
So what we did is, if you can picture where our parking lot is, when you drive down, it's kind of a big U. So we had all the trunks lined up there. And parking, we work with Pete. He lets us park people down there, and they just walk over, and that worked out really well.
Yeah, at least their last time that they came, Jake Lee came, Sherri came, they helped around traffic.
We'll have another food truck for sure, and then in the back, again, will be where you enter the haunted house. And then up front, if you can picture where the, our gift shop is up front, um, they allow us to have a little bon, not a bonfire, a fire, you know? And we will bring a DJ in. We have the same vibe we use year after year. It'll be kind of for the young kids, more of it Halloween dance party theme, you know, kind of feeling in the air. We'll probably do smores. Um, I've got a really good deal on poppers bars that everyone has had to listen to my story on. Sure in the office, so. Sixteen cents. So the kids are getting cold-eyed poppers this year. Anyway, um, it'll be a lot to keep within the budget.
Um. We had a good meeting. Uh, we have accomplished since last time. We've, uh, re-delegated the, uh, trash cans so that they spread out over the park more. Uh, we have received a bid for planter repairs that we will go over under new bids. Uh, we met with the beautification group at Little Lake Erie. The redesign of the ongoing discussion of what might happen there is in process. Uh, we also have some concerns in addition to the water and sewer lines about potential utility, uh, intrusions with power lines. So we're looking at all of those things, and the, uh, design is still ongoing. Lots of discussion around the dedication of this fourth court and the ball field with some revision on sign design that we will get to. And, uh, we did get a shade tree uh, quote on stickamores for six hundred dollars per tree planted and mulched. However, we've also received feedback about additional species of trees that we might consider, so that is ongoing. Um, and, uh, we uh, will be meeting again next on September sixteenth at five P M., which is a break from our usual time because of Labor Day and the week after that, a business trip for one of the committee members who has a microphone in his hand right now. Uh, but we will be meeting on September sixteenth at five P M. here. Any question?
We have to discuss with the board. I think we should have run it or not, to name the park. The three.
Um, that hasn't come before the board yet, but I don't know if you're.
No, I was planning, since we only had two committee members to go out meeting. Or, uh, robustly at the next meeting and then come back with recommendations.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Uh, old business three point one easement discussion. Kevin, I believe the committee wanted to speak further with, uh, with Ken.
On Kirk Road, we need easements. It would be the Jay and Janet Noble and then the house up the hill from there.
How do we? So we would, we would need to get a description of the property over with, not, you know, not, not all of the property, but the portion of which we would easement would be, and then I would need, you know, the deeds to those properties, so I could instrument that would grant us the, uh, easement along with the other documents that would go with it. But if you need a surveyor and engineer, if you need some sort of weeds and mouse description of the area that we're.
How do we do that with regards to the property or if you're trying to, or want us just to come out and announce?
You got to go, you're going to have to approach them first and then, and.
Find out.
Yes, and if they'd be willing to cooperate with you and explain to them what you're looking for and see whether they're willing to do it. I'm sure they're going to want, if anybody looks at it for them, they're going to want us to, you know, agree in the document that will indemnify them against any claims that might arise as a result of parties to the property.
Yes, that's a short discussion.
Yeah. It's not a lot, Greg, is it?
You know, that area.
No. And divided by two.
Right. And it's, it's not like we're proposing a new you know, staying. It's, it's there. Uh, three point two, our water storage tank, um, Kate, I believe that you're going to need a resolution for M J. Delaware.
Delaware.
For Delaware, uh, authorizing them to separate the water and storage tank from the rest of the water project.
We don't know if we need to run some, but let's do it.
You want to authorize them again? Yeah, in order to get them to do it. So I would make a motion authorizing Delaware Engineering to separate the water, water storage, uh, tank portion from the overall water improvement project. And then also authorize Delaware Engineering to convert the total water project into the acceptable USDA uh, format.
Hope we did that.
We did, but I'll leave it in there to make sure that that is now a separate project, so we want that to be in there also. I would make that motion second. Further discussion? All in favor?
I oppose.
Um, three point three, a pavilion update. Did Crystal, you say you started to get some quotes in on the one? Okay, so that'll, we should have them in, and the board can look at them during this month with the next
Yeah.
work session and at the next regular meeting.
Well, when are we, when are we ready to start open Monday and A M.?
Uh, since we've started to get some quotes in for work, we can at least show that we've taken a positive step forward. Um, the next meeting will be in September. Their closeout is in October, so we could have an answer for them in September. I think we just need some concrete quotes now, and then the board would be at a position to look at the costs and.
So we're getting bids for materials. And then the palm.
And they have to be concrete. It'll, there'll be quotes. They're not bids. They're, they're coming under, underneath the, uh, twenty thousand dollars.
And do we have a formal agreement with the John Cor?
We do.
There's, there's a, a agreement that he will, but it's only if the court chooses forward with.
Right, okay.
They need us to list materials that we needed. Uh, they adjust a couple companies, I forget if it's two companies, just to get a materials list through. So for their bulk, we got an under and around twelve thousand.
So Ben, we're, we're getting the quotes now. Then in September, the board will look at the quotes and make a decision whether they want to go for.
I think that would be a fair assessment.
And then and then from there, the decision will be made to buy them build it or not.
Right. And if the board does not make a decision in September, we will still have October before their deadline. Because I believe October fourteenth or.
When they want.
Their deadline.
Should we remove the mic so that we, sitting here, can we hear what the thing said? So that, um, listening. When you see the Yeah, those captions on, on that screen.
So our, our next be, our October meeting will be the fourteenth also, or the fifteenth, rather.
Okay.
I think we'll be closing up with those two. Is there any other old business?
Work that I have not brought up. I, I just wanted to add to the water sewer, just to have on record that Dave's not going to be able, I mean, our next regularly scheduled ma- uh, water sewer meeting was going to be Labor Day anyway, so, and Dave couldn't make it. So that will be delayed till September sixteenth, nine A M. So that can go in in the, in the, uh, public announcement or.
November sixteenth is the next water sewer committee?
Yeah, at nine A M. because I didn't put that in the, uh.
September sixteenth.
Uh, moving into new business, um, four point one, I'm going to move the grant down. I want to make four point one, um, a motion to thank Peter D. Angeles for your donation.
Thank you.
Um, for your year-long work and tireless effort. My brother-in-law is an elf, and he was the president for New York State, so I, that's why, yeah, Chevy Miles he did. Sixty-two counties and a hundred and sixty legion laws in a year is.
Good to be home.
Yep.
I've been in some good hotels. I've been in some questionable.
So I would make a motion to thank Peter D. Angeles for his, uh, year-long work and effort uh, to support our Tustin Youth.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Y'all deserve. Uh, four point two is the authorization to apply for the grant funding through Sullivan County Youth Bureau, uh, by the Tustin Youth for state funding. So I would make, uh, a motion to authorize Tustin Youth to apply for the grant funding through Sullivan County Youth Bureau for the state funding. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
That was brutal.
I think South whisper, I second Iris.
Thank you.
Um, four point two, uh, in his other hat, as our animal control officer, uh, Peter and his wife were able to, uh, accept three hundred and nineteen dollars worth of donations, uh, towards their budget during River Fest in the tent that went out there, so that was nice to see. I don't think we need a motion on that, so we will. That was what I was thinking of.
And that seemed like you're
We accepted that money as part of it. I will amend my resolution not only to thank Peter for it, but to also accept the the monies that he collected. Uh, it's exactly the amount. And I would make a motion on four point two to accept the donations of three hundred and nineteen dollars that were raised during River Fest.
I second. The educational table. What our dog was, went very well. Uh, do you think we can do it again for Honeybee?
I would just talk to the festival organizers and.
I don't know how much that table is, but might have to make a motion to get the table.
You've got discretionary funding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know who the organizer is.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
Uh, survey for the water sewer shed. Discussion on that, Kevin? I don't, what do we, we don't need a survey report, I don't believe.
We don't need it?
I, I wouldn't think so. So we've already got the property down there. We're replacing it. It's going to be replaced in this same, uh, footprint, basically.
For bigger program, I think.
Okay.
I believe because of the flood line, we're required to have a
Well, he may want that. Yeah, he, he might be, he might need to do the survey, and he might want elevation also.
Yeah.
The flood zone, because if, if you're putting the building in the flood zone, it changes the standard.
Okay. So I would make a motion to authorize the water and sewer department to obtain a survey for their shed. A second.
I'll say.
Further discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Uh, four point four, um, I did get a request from the two judges to appoint a backup court officer, Krista Gallagher. Um, Krista also works with the other court officers of the New York State Court System. So she's already trained. Discussion on that? I would make a mo-
I was just, just curious, where does that, uh, fit in budget-wise?
Um, she would only be, my understanding is she'd only be used when the others can't be.
Oh, okay.
Who's missing out of there?
One of them had to resign, who was, she was relocated, so she gets replaced.
Okay. Uh, a motion to appoint Krista Gallagher as a court officer for the town of Tustin.
I made that motion.
I will second. All in favor?
I oppose.
Um, Kate, you're looking for an additional member for your conservation advisory council? Um, Spencer? Spencer Branch?
I didn't know.
Yes, I, I think that, um, we might have lost a member, so I would like to have an additional member stand in the room.
Okay, please. The number is set by the board, so this, this will be a replacement.
I think it's, uh, no, I think the, the number is tied to seven.
Okay. Then we'll just appoint.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, under recommendation of the Chair of the Conservation Advisory Council, uh, a motion to appoint Spencer Branch to the Conservation Advisory Council. So moved. A second?
Okay.
Further discussion? All in favor?
I.
And I oppose. Uh, our planters, you're looking for Polygon four fifty?
Yes.
Okay. That's, uh, you got for the sign for repair?
Uh, the four plant the four planters have, um, uh, one of them has spread a bit and needs to be restacked and repaired, so that is the repair.
So that's the price for restacking the
fort.
Or it's an all-new planter.
That is the pro- I think I just ran out of, that is the price for repair.
Oh, okay.
They, they said that they would take it, um, take it down and put it back on.
Okay.
And using the existing material.
What are these other prices?
Uh, the other two, uh, bids that we received included using cement, which we are not planning to do.
I think something also we should add is not um, just put on your radar in the fall before the ground freezes, you should put a little stick, so when they bow, they know that.
Hmm.
Put it to those.
So I make a motion that we accept the bid from Polygon Product, the four hundred and fifty dollars to repair the planter in question.
Further discussion? All in favor?
I oppose.
Um, an additional one for the sewer plant generator is authorize the shore water superintendent to put out bid. Um, and also check the state bid for a generator suitable for the sewer plant with a October of twenty twenty-four return for the opening of the bids, if they are required. Start on the state bid, not to give you a couple months. What'd you say? You're, you're looking at me like I said something wrong. Okay, so I have a motion to put out to bid for the sewer plant generator. Wait a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Um, is there other new business?
Well, Ben, I'm gonna, I'm sorry I'm being a brat, but the deadline for the complete I know, I was on that curve. The deadline for the completion of the Sullivan One A M. project is October first. I know, I was on that curve. The deadline for the completion of the Sullivan Running Project is October first. For the completion. So, if we, if, if the board receive quotes now. Could you have a recess meeting to go over them?
I think September would be better, because we still have to get the. We still have to get in the quotes for the concrete. So, we would be able to have a work session.
But then you have two weeks to complete the project.
Oh, it's not gonna get, even if we have quotes out, it's not gonna get completed. I thought they were just looking for an update. There's, there's no way that we're gonna get them in.
Okay, then that's the answer.
Yeah. Yeah, we're just.
Alright.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess my answer is, we're, this is where we're moving forward to, where we won't be in the. Maybe, but I doubt it.
It's just.
I, I don't.
Their, um, fiscal year, I think, ends December, that's why they wanted it.
Yeah. Oh, I, I. I think that would. Not only a dead look, but it's not feasible timelines to.
Alright, so I'll speak with them in person before I send anything out, and if that changes, then I'll let you know, and if we do something else weird.
Any other? New business?
Not, I am going to open up any. Back now. I don't say much often, but. I don't say much, but. Route ninety-seven is a scenic byway, correct?
Yeah.
Supposed to be. And we are in one mile distance on our scenic byway, three eyesores that I've heard a lot from people in the town, and I goes to myself. They look like dumpsters. Alright, there's one down by Route twenty-three. There's one by Arena Court. And there's one up near the town barn. I think our code enforcement needs to step up and, well, not step up, but be backed by us to do something about these places. That scenic byway is supposed to be. An attraction for our area. And I travel ninety-seven from. One end to the other. And that's about the only mile of dumpsters that I see. So, I think we need to, like, back our town code enforcement to. Start addressing.
I spoke with Jim today about that, um. And he will, and if push comes to shove, that will. That will be the hardest, because we're dealing with that down at the fourth right now. But. Well, he'll start with a letter, anything.
That brings up a point two. When fines are assessed for code violations, it's my perception that they're one and done. And. Could those be annual? It seems like, it seems like they need to compound for.
What they, they can, they can, they can complete. Because if you look at our code, I'm sure it says that each violation, each, each week, each day. It'll be defined in there, constitutes a separate violation, so theoretically, you could keep prosecuting them. And getting fined after fine after fine indefinitely until it, until it's cured. Now, because practical matter, if. Filing them a few times and max them out, get, you know, when we can get the judge around, wrapped around that idea. If that's not getting their attention, then you, you might have to consider taking actual. Legal action in, in, in a higher level court, where you can get injunctive relief, so you can get court orders saying. Cease, exist. Cure. And that's where Jim is looking for, that's where the building department is looking for the support. The letters are the easy part, it's just if they do not comply. And we turn to our legal counsel.
This one time, I remember, a long time ago, there was an illegal junkyard at Route ninety-seven and fifty-two. And the town went in and had all those vehicles fall down there, and they went to Cortez's junkyard. And the owner had to pay for it.
And we also lost a lot through the town. Town lost it. But that's, that's the chance we take.
Right.
But we've got counsel here that I think. Can lead us the right way. I would discuss that again with Jim and let him know that the board has had a discussion, and he can, he can start with the letters and the fines, who's believing for it.
I don't know if this is new business or old business. But, uh, last meeting, we talked about parking, I'm, uh, Jim. Uh, Mike, you brought up parking, and I said we'd make a little video, and I made that little video.
Oh, it was pretty cool.
Uh, is that on the website? Can we put that on the website? How do we get that on the website? Basically, it's telling people that there's parking here. You're on Main Street, it's all jammed, and that, and the, and the bank parking lot is all jammed, just come here. And the sign that I spoke of should be shipped on, I believe, the nineteenth of this month. And that's, that's an informational sign in the same colors as the parking sign. It says additional municipal parking, Lieutenant Bridge Street, and it says right of blinking left, turn right, it's from blinking light.
Right, straight from right, it's white.
It could rise and blind.
So, anyway, I mean, actually, we get to go into the.
Is the vid, can we get the video on the website?
Yeah, if you have my love.
Do we need them?
We don't need any more.
No. It says the little.
These are the ones blame.
Got it.
You got it, right?
Is there a representative from Chamber of Commerce on parking?
There's just Bruce and I, as far as I know. We invite everyone, all the businesses on, when we did maybe invited.
I think, Mike, it'd be good for Chamber to have a representative on there, to be part of the discussion, to represent, you know, I.
Sure. You're in the chair, what do you think?
Who sounds good to me? If there's no other new business with the board, I would open the public comments, starting with Zoom. Alright, Mike. I can see you wave on them.
Jacob. Go ahead, Jacob.
Hi, I'm sorry, uh, I'm a resident at seventy-Erie Avenue, um, back in July. The town had decided to cut fifteen linear feet of, uh, mature frassicas and mulled orange plants from my property. They were completely cut to the grounds. Um, I just wanted to express my dismay that none of this had been, uh, addressed with us directly. Apparently, it was done because, uh, Nowarsburg Lambert, uh, you know, complained that their trucks can't get by safely. We would have gladly cut them back, but we wouldn't destroy mature plants. I just find it ironic that as you're beautifying the town, you have decided to deface my property. Without any consideration, uh, for what that's gonna do to.
Costs.
To general, uh, outlook of the town and the cost to us, because we now have to address that. If there's a huge gaping hole. On our property, and those plants were beautiful. They might have been overgrown, but if that was a concern, somebody should have contacted us and asked us to cut them back. I just, I just find it unacceptable, and I wanted to understand what the thought process was behind that decision, and who made the call.
Uh, that call is made by the highway superintendent. The highway superintendent obviously is separate than the, the town board. Um, and he's responsible for the maintenance of the roads within the town and the right-of-way.
Okay, I mean, what's our recourse? This is unacceptable. Like, don't we have any control over what's going on? And it's like, there, there have, there's other measures, uh, to be taken before. You take such extreme, uh, steps. They're literally cut back to the roots. Like, I, I saw, I saw, like, NICE doing pruning, and they did, like, moderate pruning just to prevent, uh, you know, uh, the utilities from being. Uh, interfered with. I wanna understand why had the plants been completely destroyed? Like, this is not reasonable, this is not sensible.
Have you talked with the highway superintendent at all?
I, I don't know who that is.
Um. His name is Don Niger. And the phone number up at the town barn is eight four five. Two five two.
Just, uh, just a second, I'm sorry, ju- just bear me from moment that, we'll write it down.
Sure. It's also on the website.
Okay, but doesn't the town board have any control over this? Does, does he make a lot of decisions, uh, on what's going on in town?
The highway superintendent is an elected position that is separate from the town board. The only. Uh. Oversight, if you will, that we would have with the highway superintendent is during budget processing. But other than that, it's kind of like, we become the Congress, and he's asking for the money, but the day-to-day operations, no. He is responsible for the maintenance of the roads within the township.
I am this, okay, so like, he has free reign to make whatever decisions he de, he spits. Without any, any consideration for town residents?
He's got the authority that's granted to him under the town law of the state of New York and the highway law of the state of New York.
So, he is his own boss, yes, that's. You know, I understand your frustration with it, um.
I mean, it seems like we're, we're the only property that had been defaced. There's other properties that have overgrown bushes, and ours are the only ones destroyed. I'm just like. Well, like, I'm just trying to understand the thought process, and like, you know, is, is there any recourse we have in terms of suing him or getting. Any kind of compensation for the damage that was caused to our property?
I think you'd wanna have a conversation with him for any of the recourse that you're looking for, maybe he can come up with something for you, but, uh. If it's within the right-of-way of the town highway. Um, he has the right under law. To, and, as a matter of fact, by law, he has to keep the right-of-way clear, um.
Understood, but not completely destroyed plants.
We had a similar incident. Um, last year, where somebody was upset because he mowed in front of. Uh, their property. And he's required by law to maintain that, so, I mean, maybe have a discussion with him. And it can alleviate some of the questions that you've got. Well, I lost you, Jacob, I don't.
I, I am ready though.
Hold, hold on, okay, there you go, Jacob, go ahead.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate the insight and guidance. Uh, I just, uh, you know, wanted to bring it to your attention, uh, so that's addressed. Uh, with him as, and by the board. I think we can all agree that this defacing, uh, residents' property. And taking such extreme measures. I mean, please stop by, stop by, uh, my property line and take a look at it. Everybody knows how that street looks like. Everybody knew those bushes. They could have been just cut back, not completely, uh, cut to the ground, literally cut to the ground. I don't know if it was, uh, like, a laziness thing, or it was easier to just destroy them versus cutting them back. But like, I don't understand the thought process. It's, it's very upsetting.
And I can understand that. I would suggest that you have a conversation with the highway superintendent. Um, I would probably leave out the word lazy.
I.
I understand your frustration, but. Have a conversation with him. Um, just like the people whose mailbox ended up in the woods. During the storm, because they came out with a bat bow and moved trees out of the road, and the mailbox went with it. You know, you're, you're not alone in your, your frustrations.
I, I understand. It's just like a lack of common sense or courtesy, even. You know, this, we're, we're all residents of this town, and we're trying to, like, keep our streets beautiful. And the fact that somebody would think it's a good idea to completely destroy plants instead of just cutting them back, is just beyond me, like, it, it defies logic.
Okay, well, have a conversation with him, because. We're starting to rehash. How upset you are, and I understand how upset you are. But I can give you no recourse.
Is there anybody else on Zoom? No one else on Zoom.
Mike?
I'm gonna, uh, address the Parks and Public States Committee meeting, which Greg chaired, and I agree with him, it was a very productive session. Uh, one of the most encouraging things to come out of it is the fact that now there are quotes for the tree replacement, and there's six hundred dollar rates. There might be some discussion about what kind of tree you ultimately wind up with, but I think we're in a ballpark now that seems to make some sense. I think regardless of the ultimate fate of the pavilion. At these kind of prices, the town should move swiftly to replace the tree. I don't see how there has to be a linkage from one to the other. We won't rehash the old sad story about what happened to the trees that were there, but suffice to say, that was a wrong, and it can now be made right. Pavilion, you know, is still a somewhat contentious issue, but I think we can all agree that that park needs treating. It's rather sad-looking as it is right now, as bare as it is. And the time to do something about it is now. Second point that came out of that meeting is. On the topic of the pavilion, there was some consideration about, uh, possibly not putting a full roof on it and having. Some sort of shade structure, instead, a temporary roof. Which, uh, would. Get us out of this terrible jackpot we're in about having to ultimately put in a bathroom. Because it is a place of assembly. And contrary to what we've heard in some of these previous discussions. The, uh, shade sales that are available now are durable, they're tested. And since we don't have to carry winter snow weight, they'd only be up from May through October. It would drastically reduce the maintenance cost for the whole project, and will be a big saving for the taxpayers ultimately. This has been a long process. But there seem to be some reasonable solutions right there at hand. And as always, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Yes.
My first comment might be for Ken, I don't really know. I'm Sue Powell, I live in Nowarsburg. Um, excuse me, about five or six years ago, we bought some property on Delaware Drive, and. We were curious about the flood zone, so we got, and please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, we got a, uh, flood zone map from FEMA. And it showed our property and Breen Creamer's property as not in a flood zone. Which is quite surprising, and we did get flooded, you know, six, so. Regardless if it says flood zone, if you got a flood zone, it's still.
Yeah.
Okay, so wait, one second. So, I'm curious. If you really have to have a survey, if the town barn is in a flood zone, it's quite a bit. More elevated.
Which town barn do you thought was, you know, with the water? Oh, the water department's next?
Yeah.
Yeah, Chad.
The, the shed, whatever.
Yeah, he, he's gonna require that, just like, he's gonna require the survey, just like he required the survey for the. Park in the pavilion.
Who's, who's he? I'm sorry.
The code enforcement officer.
Oh, even if it's not in a FEMA flood zone?
Uh, that's, that is determined by the elevation of the surveyor to give you.
Oh.
They use that elevation in order to, to, uh, compare it with the vast.
Yeah, you can, you can do, you can do what's called flood hazard certification, and basically, you're getting told that. A parcel is somewhere within the flood zone, but you could have a parcel where the back area where it's here, the water is in the flood zone. And the front where your structure is, is out of the flood zone, and that's what those elevation surveys do, is they help them establish.
Oh, I, and I. I apologize, because I, when I say survey, I should be saying like ten step, an elevation survey.
Okay.
The other thing is, the, the, first of all, depending on when you looked at the map, the maps changed a few years back, so depending on how long ago you look. There were places that were, let's say, ten years ago, were not in flood zones, that are now, because after, I think it was after Katrina, and, and, and they got hammered. They took another look at where, at where the flood zones are, and, and reestablished some of those in some places. And it'll always, you'll always scratch your head, because you'll find property that's not in the flood zone that always seems to flood, and you'll find property that's in the flood zone that never seems to flood. It's not, it's not a perfect science.
Well, um, I think our, the map we got was newer than ten years ago. Now I'm curious, I'm gonna request another one, we're up to date.
You can also go on, and it's a little bit cumbersome, but if you go onto the FEMA website. And you can, and you work your way through it, you can actually. Get where you'll see an aerial photograph of your property, and, and with the, with the flood zone superimposed over it, again. It, you know, it's a superimposed thing over an aerial photograph, it's not.
Right.
But it gives you some idea.
Yeah.
As to what you're working on.
Well, this is our block and lot number. I, I was just curious about. You know, we're a lot lower than.
Hmm.
Okay, my other question might be for Craig. How many actual water and sewer customers are there? How many bills are sent out? Anybody know?
Finger, finger pointing at you.
Around three hundred.
Yeah, okay, three hundred, yeah. Three hundred, yeah. Okay, the reason I'm asking is, um, I'm just thinking about, especially since we've heard that we're gonna have a forty percent. The, the, um, grant is gonna be split up for the water, for the tower, and then the infrastructure. So, the, um. What I would do is. Take the. Entire amount of the project. Subtract the grant, and then divide by three hundred. I just wanna know approximately, I wanna know what to expect.
Don't, let's hope we get more grant money.
Yeah.
And you can't really know what to expect, I hate to say it because those were quotes, um, those were estimates. Back several years ago, so it's been.
And that's the reason that we're, the work that Jane and the, and the committee have done. In finding this is allowing us to now break this project into pieces because. In order for them to start at the tower, the whole job has to be engineered and then approved by the state, what this is allowing us to do. Is take the water tower, get working on the water tower, which is decades out of.
Yeah.
And apply forty percent of the money towards it, so that the next part that we go for, hopefully if enough people can answer the survey and, you know. Get these, uh, information back. Each year, we can maybe get forty percent of each of these projects, so that in the end, instead of having a twelve million dollar. Only got, you know, three and a half million for. We're gonna break that down and we could end up with eight million on the twelve million dollar project.
And another thing that I think is good to know, that gave me keys of mine when I started on the committee. Each aspect of the project has been broken into phases or categories and then prioritized. So as the financial realities come into sharper focus. We will know what the priorities are, how far our money is going to go and the scope that is realistic.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, I would just say, when you're reading the, particularly in the Democrat, there's, we're not alone. I don't know if you read about Swan Lake a few months back.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, it's my own self-interest.
I understand, but I'm, I'm just saying comparing apples to apples.
Yeah, I, I'm very sorry for Swan Lake, but.
Other public comment, yes?
Need this. Okay, I'm Anthony, I'm from down in the flat, I've got a couple of things, uh, I'm pretty sure you. All have noticed that, uh, Thor wasn't here this evening, um. Hey, I, uh, I got contacted by Star.
You don't have to read her whole thing, it was given to the board.
I'm not gonna read it, I'm, I'm not gonna read, um, what I did, did wanna say is that I do have, uh, I have burned copies for anybody else that may wanna see it and. Uh, although she asked me to read this, I think it's best that Star speak to our own issues, so I, I have, uh, I do, I do have a copy. You guys could have all got it, right?
We did, yes. The guy, thanks.
Bringing them all copies.
Okay, I have a funny copy that, that anybody else might be interested in, um, seeing what Star has. Right, I know, I'll put these over there on the way out.
What is it about?
Uh, it's a spark, yeah, yeah, you can have one.
Yeah.
You, you, I get on the way out, get the, the, uh, Star has a couple of things that she likes to speak to, to hold on. Um, just leave it at that. I have a, I have a couple other things, uh, question, the watershed that we're talking about, that's gonna be repaired. Which? One on Delaware Road by me or on the other side?
Sorry for what?
The, the, the shit that you guys are speaking about.
It's to Nico's property, not the one near you, near that, the other side.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure one by me had to get fixed, it would be another elevation issue, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Probably. Alright, anyway, thank you for that, that answer, um, then I, the only other thing I had was speaking to this, uh. Again, billion issue, I couldn't agree even more with Mike than I do now about, uh, both the tree issues, let's get trees in the ground and, and, uh. And then about concerning the alternate, uh, shade structure. Before you guys move on with the, uh. Um, you know, how would I say, no, I shouldn't say before you guys move on, before a, a shovel goes in the ground. Or in a concrete form or having lumber delivered, would you not have, uh, had to explore? The, uh, I don't know. The cost for these alternate shade structures? And it seems like we're, you know, we came this far and now it's, let's get this, let's pick a shovel in the ground.
Um, we have been attempting to do that, it has been our experience that. A lot of people are unwilling to give estimates until the project is agreed upon. Today I did find a vendor who was willing to give those prices, I had asked for them to be delivered by six o'clock.
Yeah.
I checked my email at six seventeen and I. But it, it, it is an ongoing process and re- being researched.
Understood and, and I appreciate that. The question really is though, are we looking to move? Forward? Before that's explored?
Well, I think we'll probably have numbers for shades if we can get some of these vendors to assist with us where we can say, okay, this is. The sound of the concrete is, this is how much the, uh, materials are with the shade, uh, that.
Yeah, that's, that should be, well, A and B.
I was encouraged, I was encouraged by the day that I was able to move it forward.
Thanks, Rick, alright, thank you.
Uh, I think Anthony brings up a good, uh, good point about the trees, do we need a motion to approve funds? Cause we know we're gonna plant trees someplace and, and the fall is a good time to plant. So do we need a motion just to approve some funding for that?
No, we, we've got money to set aside in the park, if you decide you wanna do two different trees and twelve hundred dollars. It's under your fifteen hundred dollar limit, so you can do it with two verbally, opposed to over fifteen hundred, you would need to rip. Um.
No, do you approve from the board to spend money?
As long as it's within the budget, I would say no, if the committee thinks that that's the idea, they can come back to the business, is what we wanna do, the board's got objection to it. I don't, does anybody on the board have objections to looking at any trees down there? Who doesn't love trees?
Yeah.
I don't.
I'm a little concerned about sycamore, but I hear that there's some. Change in mind about sycamore, just because they, they grow to be quite large and heavy for the trees and.
Yeah, it's depending on placement, obviously we will talk with.
Well, we had to talk water.
Water and, and.
Places, yeah.
The same thing we have at it. If, that was my concern, the water and, the, the, not the little like you're eating, not repeat itself, but you say we wanna put trees here and water and sewer say. No, not there.
Craig did supply me with the water and sewer lines in the park, so I have that for the, our committee meeting. And just for everyone's education, we are on the list currently are sycamores, sugar maple and river birch.
And I think, again, the nurseries are gonna sell these quickly in the fall, cause it's such a good time, so that's all I'm saying is. We should be reserving whatever we decide.
Yes, sir.
I would like to just make a statement about, um, sycamore trees, they're beautiful. Really like them a lot, but for the park, I think that river birch is a much more practical. Tree to put in, so I'm just making my statement. They shed the sycamores dead and it is enough to keep the park clean. Without having to put something into the ground that is going to create a lot more. Cleaning issues of the lawns of the area because they shed. Large chunks, small chunks, river birch do not, thank you.
Lowly leaves underneath. Any other public comment, yes?
Good evening, uh, Eugene Wolf, five one two Delaware Drive, I just wanted to follow up on what, uh, Kevin was saying about the parking. With the town now, uh, acknowledging the additional traffic that we're seeing in the village and town. And asking cars to be redirected to park elsewhere. I think this would be a prudent time to take a survey of our sidewalk. And determine, you know, what state of repair they're in, I personally noticed some that are in engineering terms would be characterized as failure. Um, it'd be prudent to, uh, take a survey, establish a budget, establish maintenance and installation. So that we can serve our, uh, merchants properly with sidewalks, with the community people who use them, uh, for regular. Daily activities as well as big events like the Fourth of July, we can avoid any type of litigation in the future. Perhaps there's someone still offering money available for that, but I think it's something that, uh, at this juncture would be worthy to examine, thank.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes?
Hi, I'm Catherine Andrews, I have the car wash and dog wash down on, um, Kirk Road. Um, I, I'm here mostly because I've been waiting for this meeting to be reimbursed for, um, overpayment on my water bill. And everyone has been lovely to work with, I, I, I think my only issue is just accountability and communication. Um, I was contacted multiple times, um, about having a leak and I kept an eye on my meter, there was no leak happening when the car wash wasn't being used. Um, and I, there wasn't enough information to, anyway, I, I'm fine, but it's, I, you know, I've waited. Eight months now to be reimbursed for this, what I would make in a month is, it's a, it's a large amount. I have heard from other people that they've gotten the same calls that they had a leak. And the amount of follow-up I had to do, I just wanna make sure that we're, when people are confused that we're just following up with the water sewer because. It was a significant difference and my bill was very different and I don't, I'm not, there's not a single person at fault, I think it's just a lack of communication between departments. And I just wanna make sure we're trusting the community members when they call and say, this doesn't seem right, but. They're just being listened to, I just wanted to say that, and thank you for accruing my.
Yeah, and the water sewer, you need, you generally the, visit the, uh, one of the first Monday of the month at nine o'clock in the morning, so that's probably the.
Well, let me think, I was definitely on a learning curve.
Right, right.
You know, I have a well, I've never, you know, the only water bill I've ever paid is for my grandparents in California. And this was a similar bill to what my grandparents in California are paying and that was shocking.
This was, the meter was literally malfunctioning, correct?
Correct.
Right, and this is.
Yes, but I, I, from what I've heard from other community members, I can't be the only one and it seems like I might be the only one being reimbursed and I just wanna make sure that. People are making sure everyone else is being.
That's why our meeting are open, you know, they're gonna need your open.
We had to pay over three hundred dollars for the meters and it's since cost me over sixty hundred dollars total for this three hundred dollar meet, so that's a lot. Thanks.
Any other public comment? We're coming.
We answered Star's last point.
We can do whatever you would like to do. Um.
The purpose served by the camera at the traffic light and perception of British Big Bird Grove area.
Yeah, that's not a camera. It's, it's definitely not a camera, but, and it's been there for a long time, so. It just shows that she's a very cautious driver, doesn't look up. Till then.
Till then, okay.
Uh, excuse me, can I make one comment regarding the tree selection for, for the town? Uh, I know that the river birch had been, uh, presented as an option. I, I planted a bunch of them on my property and they're susceptible to tent, uh, caterpillars, you know, those big white tents, uh. That, uh, built throughout the season now, so I think that would be a pretty unsightly, uh, uh, selection if you went with that option. Because then that requires maintenance and, um, you know, annual, uh, maintenance, just to make it presentable.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well.
It true?
Any other work coming? I, I've just noticed that increasing number of towns are beginning to look into. Uh. Uh, Airbnbs and other short-term rentals and I think. Something we should begin to monitor, I don't, you know, I don't have an immediate plan, I don't have a credit committee, but I, I'm just. I think it's worth looking into. The way they have in Highland, the way they are in Monticello, just in today's favor. It's, it's a concern of a lot of people. The concern is that how many, the, this percentage of homes in a very small community, they're becoming short-term rentals. It's, it's a concern. It's a residential town, but after a while, when, when a large percentage of your homes are no longer residential home. It's, I, I'm not saying I have any plan or any agenda or anything, but other towns, comparable towns are looking into. It's. I think it's worth looking into. Any others from the board? Um, our next work session will be the, not the third of the panel.
Oh, good.
Don't we have? Yeah, it is the third.
It's always.
It'll be taking coffee, the birthday. And our regular meeting is on the tenth. If there is no other. One comment, I would make a motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I've mentioned before in the city, we brought some, even a bunch of one in honor of what she did for us, so it's over there, so you guys go.
I'll make that motion.